Okay, if I, excuse me, I have 5:30. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is December 13th. This is the meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. We'll start out with a moment of silent reflection. I would ask that we continue to keep the students and the families from the Oxford shooting in our prayers, and then also all of the families in Kentucky and Tennessee in the terrible tornado. Thank you. If you would rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Clark, roll call, please.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Reader.
Here.
Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Drick.
Here, from City of Howell Medical Condition.
Commissioners Ajax.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
And Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Of course, Ms. President.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda is correspondence. This evening, we have four pieces of correspondence, one from Alpena County, one from Grand Traverse County, one from Ogama County, and one from Sheboygan County. I am looking for a resolution to receive the correspondence and place on file.
So move, Gross.
Support, Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Griffith. Any comments? All those in favor of receiving and placing on file signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number six this evening is our call to the public. This is our first of two calls to the public. Anybody here in the meeting room wishing to address the Board of Commissioners, if you'd raise your hand, you'll be provided with three minutes. Seeing none, I'll move over to the Zoom portion. And anybody on Zoom wishing to address the Board of Commissioners, if you would indicate so by using the Zoom Raise Your Hand function or waving at us, we will give you three minutes also. I'm not seeing anybody, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the call to the public and remind everybody that there is another call to the public later in the meeting. Item number seven on the agenda is approval of minutes. This evening, we have two sets of minutes, one dated November 22nd, 2021, and the other dated December 8th, 2021. I'm looking for a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
So move, Griffith.
Support, Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Gross. Any corrections or additions to the two sets of minutes? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of approving both sets of minutes signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Minutes are approved. We have no tabled items from previous meetings, so we'll move on to item number nine on the agenda. That's approval of tonight's agenda. Looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved, Griffith.
Support, Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Plank. Any questions or discussion on the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? You have an agenda. Item number 10 are, is reports. It's an opportunity for Commissioners to share information with their colleagues and the public. So are there any Commissioners with reports this evening? Seeing none, I'll close reports, and we'll move on to our public hearing on our budget. This is for the adoption of the 2022 Livingston County budget. So I would need a motion to call the public hearing to order.
Support, Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Reader, support by Commissioner Griffith. Any discussion? All those in favor of calling the public hearing to order signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Our budget hearing is open. This is an opportunity for the public to chime in with any comments they have on our 2022 budget, which was, been talked about in many, many meetings, but this is an opportunity for the public to chime in with any comments. So we'll start here in the room. Doesn't look like I see any hands here in the room, so we'll move over to Zoom and ask if there are any body on Zoom if they want to make a comment on the budget to indicate by raising your, using the Zoom Raise Your Hand feature. Seeing none, I think I would look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So move, Helserman.
Support, Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Griffith. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Hearing is closed. Item number 12 on the agenda is approval of consent agenda items. This evening, we have 11 items, starting with Resolution 2021-12-183 through 2021-12-193. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved, Griffith.
Support, Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Plank. Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Thank you. In reviewing the easement to the city resolution, I recall Marty making a good suggestion, and it tailed with my suggestion. His was to have a separate maintenance contract. Mine was to make sure we had a just cause exit termination clause. When I did not see it in tonight's motion, I thought I better bring it up now. If it's something that's already been relayed to the attorney, then I have no objection keeping it on the consent agenda. If it hasn't been relayed to our attorney, then I'd move that it, the consent agenda have one less motion, and I, later I'd make the amendment if necessary.
Yeah, I think the appropriate thing to do, Commissioner Drick, is, because any single Commissioner can remove an item from the consent agenda without, you don't need a second. So I, if we want to discuss this further, I would recommend that you ask for the resolution to be removed off the consent agenda.
That's fair. I'll ask for it to be removed to make sure we have those two extra clauses in.
So that is, just for the record, that makes sure we're on the same page. It's 2021-12-187.
Correct.
Okay, so we're going to remove off the consent agenda, 2021-12-187. Is there any other discussion on the consent agenda items to be removed? Here, seeing and hearing none, I know after all these months, we need a roll call.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
And Commissioners Ajax.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I think for, just so we get down to item number 13, resolutions for consideration. We have, I plus the resolution that Commissioner Drick asked to pull off the consent agenda. I think from a sequence standpoint, we'll start with the 187 resolution, just to keep things in numerical order. So looking for a motion, hold on a second. There's a resolution authorizing the granting of a property easement to the City of Howell for public restroom facilities. Looking for a motion.
Motion.
Support, Smith.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Drick, do you want to start off on the discussion?
Yes. I remember Marty making a good point that we ought to have a maintenance contract because in his experience, that's where a lot of the difficulties arise afterwards on these easements. And I made a comment that we ought to have an ability to exit for just cause. We don't know what's in the future. All sorts of weird things could happen. We should have an exit clause. And with that, I'd make a motion that we add the maintenance contract that Marty thought was a good idea and add the just cause contract clause and direct our attorney to do that.
So there's a motion to amend the resolution, adding just clause section to be drafted by legal counsel, and to have a maintenance agreement. That too, to be, Commissioner Drick, to be drafted by legal counsel?
Please.
So there's a motion to amend Resolution 2021-12-187. Is there support for the amendment?
Support, Gross.
We have a motion in support. Would, I'd see Director Foltz, give him an opportunity to address the resolution.
You guys are on board with what Nathan and I spoke of was during the attorney's review of it, that we were gonna add that language to it. So we're, we're on board with that.
Okay.
That's fine.
Commissioners Ajax.
Thank you. Just a question. So is the, the motion for the amendment, that's kind of a contingent approval? So it's a, the motion is to approve so long as, the Board Chair has authorized the sign so long as those supervisions are in the contract? Is that the nature of the motion to amend?
Commissioner Drick, is that, was that your intention to, I'll say a contingent, you know, that this is a contingent approval upon getting the, the two items addressed, the maintenance agreement and the just clause termination?
Yes, that's a good, that's a good approach. Thank you, Mitch.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on the amendment from Commissioners?
I have some questions.
Commissioner Helserman.
I understand the exit clauses. It lighted me a little bit more on the maintenance. Are we talking about mowing? Are we talking about cleaning restrooms? Are we talking about, you know, painting the building? But what, what involves, what is all involved with that? In that, the buildings are not ours per se.
Yeah, I believe Commissioner Smith's concern was that, that there was a maintenance agreement, that they would, they would own the building, they would take care of the building, they would keep it in good repair, and then the other part of that would be that there would be an out in case, you know, either party, well, I guess we would not be happy with the maintenance, or they weren't following through with their obligations.
Okay, so if they're not, let's say they are not, you know, keeping it maintained, then do we, it refers, it works back to us?
That would be an attorney question.
Yeah.
Not sure how that would be worded.
If I made, the contracts I've read and been a part of generally, if there's a lack of, by the, by the party responsible, we have the right to go in and maintain the property according to the standards that we've all agreed on, and then the city would owe us reimbursement for those expenses.
We would back bill to the city. Okay, yeah, then that's fine. But we're, it's not gonna be your first responsibility.
Any other questions? Commissioners Ajax.
Just maybe a question for Mr. Nordford. So will this maintenance agreement have the effect of our ability to rescind the easement or prescribe it, or whatever the case might be? If, if they continually violate the maintenance agreement, we want to find a way to repossess effectively.
Yes, and I understood that as part of Commissioner Drick's component of before cause termination, so we can link those together. Whether we do this in a single document or separate documents, I'll just defer to the attorney who prepares it, and we can certainly accomplish this for you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other Commissioners?
So then, if we do repossess, we own the buildings then? But, you know, what, I don't understand, if we, if we repossess and demolish the building, for example, it's not our building to, to repossess or to, to demolish. So just, just so this agreement covers us when we're, when we write the agreement? That's all I'm... There's a lot of, you know, when we go down this road, you know, there's...
I believe if they made any improvements to the land and we weren't happy with the maintenance, that it would revert to the way it was when we granted the easement. So they would probably have to remove the structure and make the property whole. I would say that that would put that in the language.
Okay, so that was, that's the sort of language we put in. Okay.
Follow up.
Commissioners Ajax.
I guess if we go down this road, do we want, would we want that building to be done? Shouldn't it be our choice within the contract, Mr. Nordford? How, what happens if we have to quiet the title, or if we have to take another action? It would be our choice.
Always be our property. What we decide to do with it, if they don't meet their contractual obligations, will be up to us. You may want it at that point, and, you know, invoice them to pay it.
Anybody else? I lost track. We were voting on the amendment?
Yes. To amend, correct.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the resolution. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? So now we're back to the main motion with, so it's been amended. Is there any further discussion on the resolution? Hearing and seeing none, now we are voting on the main resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Motion passes. Next up on resolutions for consideration is Resolution 2021-12-194. It is a resolution adopting the 2022 Livingston County operating budget. Is there a motion?
So moves.
Support, Griffith.
Motion by Commissioners Ajax, support by Commissioner Griffith. Administrator Bird, did you?
I really, I thank you, by the way. I really don't have anything to add other than what's already been discussed. You know, if, if we leave here tonight with an adopted budget that ends what's almost year-round work for department heads and staff, it really gets started early spring and goes through the summer and up into this point. And so, just to summarize again what we've already talked about, for the general fund budget, it's $53.6 million. It's balanced without any trickery. It provides us a healthy amount of contingency fundings for things that may arise through the year. It preserves a healthy general fund balance. We're funding a compensation study next year, which is something that we talked about as being necessary. It's been seven or eight years since we've done that. It's gonna allow us to continue to attack our pension liabilities as we've been doing for several years now, and it allows all those departmental functions that you heard from in presentations going back to August and September to be funded and to continue. So just want to thank everybody who's involved with this. A lot of time and effort goes into this. The budget book is drafted. It's a wonderful document. It's an award-winning document from Fiscal Services, so we're proud of that. Certainly, if there are any other remaining questions or items of discussion, Cindy or I are here and we can address those. The resolution that you have in front of you does a nice job of summarizing department by department what the allocated amounts are, so that's a good thing that members of the public can look at if they want more information about specific departments. But I think that's all I have to say. Appreciate your consideration of this tonight, and again, try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nathan, I'm not sure if you can answer this or clarify this for me, or perhaps it should be Cindy. But in Cindy's memo to us that came out on December 8th, on page two, under summary of changes, indicated that the additional pension payment in 2021 was $3.5 million, and budgeted for 2022 is $150,000. And then back on page four, down towards the bottom of the page, it indicates that apparently there's $650,000 being allocated to be paid, and apparently that's in the budget. And I'm wondering, what's the difference and where are those monies located?
The 650 that's allocated, 150 of that is a general fund allocation, and then we would take $500,000 from the benefit fund, I believe, is how we're totaling the 650. So that amount, the 150 is what's part of the general fund allocation. Yep. And, and we, as I said back in October, we fully plan to do more than that. That's the starting point for us. We have done significantly more year after year, and that would be our goal again next year, assuming that the Board still makes that a priority.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Anybody else? Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, on page five of the resolution, page 97 in our package, the second, if further resolved, when it refers to items that are under $100,000 and variances from, from the amount, and essentially gives the county administrator a sign-off variance of 10% or up to $25,000 on those variances. It, in my short stint here, it appears that that's a pretty common issue. And $25,000 in light of a fifty, almost $54 million budget and total budget of 95 million seems to be a very, very narrow window for you to deal with. And in an era of rising costs, is it, is it beneficial in your mind to look at that on a more, on a broader scale?
It's a fairly small amount, but, you know, we, we have a process that we go through when that needs to occur. We get the documentation together. I work with the relevant department head, maybe Chris, a lot, dealing with different projects. You know, I'm fine to have it continue the way that it is. If it were changed, that would be fine, too. I know Cindy probably has more of the historical knowledge on that, but I guess I'm somewhat indifferent to whether or not it should change at this point.
Commissioner Smith, the $25,000 from my recollection, because it's been that for quite a while, is in line with our procurement policy. So anything that's $25,000 or above requires to go out for bid. So that's in line with that. So anything that's above $25,000 needs to go out for bid and then come before the Board. Anything under $25,000, really, county administrators has the authority to.
And that includes cost overruns on existing material costs or whatever that comes up in, in the course of, of a job.
That's correct. Those would come back before the Board.
He said, any other comments or questions from Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Helserman.
I just want to thank, thank you for all your hard work on the budget. It's my understanding for general information that there's a 4% for non-union, and that's straight, that's the straight, they will get their meres contributions and everything. It's just 4%. We're not, this budget doesn't have any lump sums or anything like that. It's just a 4%. Is that correct?
That is correct. The direction from the Board was to do a 4% COLA across the Board, and also do the analysis of what a 4% lump sum cost would be with some amount going to retirement. And that was the email that I sent separate. So that's just an analysis for you to review, but the, the budget itself right now is based on a 4% COLA.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other Commissioners that haven't spoken yet to the budget issue wish to speak before I call on Commissioner Gross? Commissioner Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cindy, I took a few minutes to compare some of these budget numbers in this resolution to the Level 4 information that we had approximately a month ago. And I see there's some minor pluses and minuses going through, and I'm assuming the pluses are basically because of the COLA change. But can you identify if there's any significant additions to the budget in the past month?
I believe the only changes between Level 4 and Level 5 was the COLA. There was also a, I think a couple of allocation changes that the Clerk's Office had that are included in there. Those were favorable to the general fund. And I do not, there was one other item that was changed, something also minor, that was favorable to the general fund, but I don't remember what it was off the top of my head. Oh, yes, thank you. The Sheriff's Department, the allocation to the Sheriff's Department for their secondary road patrol, they received additional funds for their grant, so that reduced the amount of the general fund allocation needed. So that was also, that was the change.
In terms of looking at the Level 4 to Level 5, it's essentially the same except for COLA.
Correct. There were no other changes besides those ones mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing and hearing none. Can you have a roll call on this?
Correct. Commissioner Ajax.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, I have to flip between computer screens here, is Resolution 2021-12-195. It's a resolution authorizing renovation work at the ground floor of the historical courthouse. Is there a motion?
So move.
Support, Griffith.
Motion by Commissioners Ajax, support by Commissioner Helserman. Director Foltz.
Good evening. Excuse me. I, I explained this pretty well, the attention, our intentions, the renovation project last Wednesday and the Monday before that, prior to that. I really don't have anything to add unless Clerk Cungley has anything.
I'm happy to answer any questions there may be.
Are there any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No question as such. I, I just want to reiterate my concerns about this resolution. Inasmuch as the force base increases triple for the renovation to, for the election division, this resolution does not contain any reference to current expenditures being performed to get that area ready for occupancy. The resolution does not... The resolution does not provide any indication of any increase in costs from the fiscal year 2022. And there's no indication as to the utilization of the space that is being vacated by the elections division. With those factors, I, I'm still opposed to this resolution. Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing, seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution 2021-12-195 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion, seven to two, motion passes. Next up on the agenda, 2021-12-196. It's a resolution authorizing a contract for janitorial maintenance and lawn care with Community Mental Health Authority. Is there a motion?
So moved Griffith.
Support Helsman.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Helserman. We had discussed this twice previously. The, I'm assuming you don't have anything new to add.
I have nothing else to add.
Are there any questions or comments from Commissioners? I, I'm seeing none. I, I'm going to opine on this. I am still opposed, I was opposed earlier. The, the cost, the incremental cost, you know, year over year is $20,000. If you, as I thought about this some more since our last discussion, if you multiply that by five years, you're looking at $100,000. And I, I'm not comfortable, even though you could argue it's a small amount of money. It's an amount of money that I'm, I think we have control over, that we will. I, I'm just, I'm, I'm still opposed to the resolution. So anything else from Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, if I could ask one question. Chris.
Yes, Commissioner Helsman.
Chris, this extra money, the, the price of the janitor is not to the general fund or not to the county. It's to CMH, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. Anything that is above the, the current, it comes out of CMH budget, which we have nothing to do with. And in your mind, this increase to them, they've been getting a very good deal. And this actually would be better for, for the county and for your department overall. Maybe you don't have to jiggle people so much or whatever. So that's the chairman's concerns, but I think that CMH is taking, taking that slack.
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any, any further comments from Commissioners? I, I'll just make one last comment. Yes, I, I am, I guess it's, I'm appreciative that it is not coming out of our general fund budget. Community Mental Health Authority does operate off of taxpayer dollars. In my opinion, is still taxpayer dollars and, and hence I'm, I'm going to vote no. But with that being said, we do have a motion and support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. Motion passes eight, one.
Thank you.
Um. See here, next resolution is 2021-12-197. It's a resolution to adopt the Municipal Employees Retirement System of Michigan Defined Contribution Retirement Plan. Is there a motion?
Move the resolutions Ajax.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Zajak, support by Commissioner Helserman. Oh, Jennifer's up, yes. Director Palm Bush.
Yes, good evening. This is a new retirement plan for non-union employees who are hired after the new year, after 1-1-2022. It is meant as a way to address the long-term liabilities of the county pension system by moving away from a defined benefit plan to a defined contribution or a 401A type of a plan for non-union employees going forward. It provides a 4% employer contribution. And if employees contribute up to 4%, the county will match that for a maximum contribution going into the, the, this account of 12%. That would be 4% by the employee and max 8% by the county. We will also, as part of this, be offering a conversion, which allows current employees who are in the defined benefit plan and the county hybrid plan to be able to convert over to this new plan. And MERS would handle that, that process. So I'm happy to ask any, or answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Plank.
Jennifer, just a quick question. Anyone who converts over to the new plan and they've been here for five years plus, are they're already vested, is that correct?
Correct. Yes, it's a five-year cliff vesting. So if somebody is, has four years, they're one year away from being vested. Yes, so it's a quicker vesting than under the hybrid plan or the, the defined benefit plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from Commissioners? Commissioners Ajax.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment for the members of the public who weren't here in the Finance Committee meeting where we discussed this in depth. The estimated savings for the county on this resolution is approximately $420,000 per year. If more people adopt it, then that county, that county savings goes up significantly. At the rate, if I'm remembering correctly, about 7,000 per, per new employee. I see Cindy shaking her head, yes. And also, I, I think this is very beneficial to the employee. This is my personal assessment and gives employees flexibility to move their money where they wish. And perhaps in the early stages of their career, be more aggressive. And then later stages, they can be more passive and then perhaps match closer to the current MERS plan. So to me, this is the win-win that we've been looking for in terms of addressing long-term liability. We effectively put a stop to the new accrual, except for those existing employees that already have the benefit of the, of the MERS current plan. And the new benefit of the DC plan will, will be that, that stop for increasing future liability. And the other thing I'll mention is I think that this gives us a good opportunity on the incentive portion transferring over. As I mentioned in finance, I'm, I'm willing to be aggressive in that for my colleagues, for their knowledge of my perspective on it. I'm willing to be aggressive on incentivizing a transfer because again, I think it benefits both the county, the county and the employee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else?
I'll just make a comment.
Commissioner Reader.
I'm against it. The reason why I'm against it is you're taking away pension. You're basically saying, come and work for us. We're going to give you a 4% increase this year, but now if you come and work for us, we're actually going to take it away by putting it into this new hybrid thing. And yes, it saves the county money. I don't think it's good for the employee. It doesn't encourage long-term staying. And it hurts people who are low income and we don't pay high wages. So most of the young people that come to this county and work can hardly make ends meet on what we're paying them. So we're now asking them to take 4% if they want to have a pension. So I guess you have to increase their income to account for that. Most young people with families need every penny that they make and they're not able to put that in. And at the end of the day, you don't end up with a pension. You end up with money that may or may not grow like you think it's going to. I just think it's a benefit that the county has offered for a long time to their employees. And it's probably why we have so many that are long vested, 20-plus years here. And I think that's going to destroy it. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reader. Anybody else? If there's nobody else on the first round, I'm going to call on Commissioners Ajax for a second comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to address Commissioner Reader's, a couple of her comments that, you know, today the system is a new employee can choose to contribute 1% to 3%. And the county has its own fixed contribution, contribution under the hybrid plan. We're increasing that fixed contribution from the county up to 4%. And we're giving the employees the opportunity, if they choose, to contribute more to their more modern, more modern retirement plan in a more 401A, 401K-type scenario. It's not 401A, 401K, but it's, it's, it's created like, like one of those types of accounts. I, I also would say with the savings, we give ourselves the opportunity to increase wages. We'll have a wage study in the budget that we just approved, that I understand is a long process, six to seven months. But at the end of that, we will have more money to perhaps take advantage of the outcome of that wage study. And this matches the, it actually surpasses any of the private sector retirement plans that I'm aware of in my experience. And it also is among, and I think the top, the 90th percentile, if I'm doing the rough math, of public sector retirement plans, surpassing pension plans up to, I think the only one better than us is 9%. And, and I can't remember where that one's from. So, so this is, this is very good for the employee in my review. And it's one that if I were an employee, I would choose. I don't think it takes away from any lower income, lower level positions. I think it actually gives them an opportunity to, through the education that will come with MERS, through also the additional contribution of the county. It helps them in a, in a longer term, in my view, than the pension. And then the added benefit is it saves the county money. So those are my response comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioners Ajax. Anybody else? Hearing and seeing none, we have a motion and support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes eight, one. Our next resolution is Resolution 2021-12-198. It's a resolution approving an appointment to the Livingston County Planning Commission. Is there a motion?
So moved Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Helsman. This was previously in front of the Board of Commissioners. It ended up in a four-four tie. Now we have a full board, so it's being brought back to, for reconsideration. There are two, there were two candidates placed forward, nominated. Mr. Schrock and Mr. Belcher were the two candidates. So in this voting, it'll be a roll call vote. You'll indicate your preference, either Mr. Schrock or Mr. Belcher. Before we get started with the vote, are there any questions or comments from Commissioners? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gross.
Mr. Schrock.
Commissioner Plank.
Mr. Belcher.
Commissioner Smith.
Mr. Schrock.
Commissioner Reader.
Mr. Schrock.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Mr. Belcher.
Commissioner Helserman.
Mr. Belcher.
Commissioner Drick.
Mr. Belcher.
Commissioners Ajax.
Mr. Schrock.
And Commissioner Griffith.
Mr. Schrock.
There are five for Mr. Schrock and four for Mr. Belcher.
Congratulations to Mr. Schrock. He will be our newest member of the Livingston County Planning Commission. Moving on in the agenda, we are at our second call to the public. Anybody wishing to address the board will have three minutes. I'll start in the room here. If there's anybody wishing to address the Board of Commissioners. Seeing none, we'll move to Zoom. And I can see one hand raised. Ms. Dobbinmeyer, if you provide your full name and address, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Judy Dobbinmeyer from Genoa Township. And a while back, I noticed on the Finance Committee agenda, a proposal to set up a subcommittee to deal with ideas for allocating the $37.2 million in federal COVID relief funds that are coming to Livingston County. But I haven't seen that show up on the regular agenda. And I am hoping that the commission will consider doing something like that so that some thought can begin to be put into how that very large amount of money can be spent most efficiently. You know, there are proposals for broadband, which certainly I would be supportive of. There are other ideas as well, and I would hope that the commission would consider following the suggestion of its administrator and set up a subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close our call to the public and move to the next agenda item, which is closed session. It's a closed session for the National Prescription Opiate Litigation, case number 17MD02804 MDL, number 2804, multi-district litigation against opioid manufacturers, distributors and retailers pending in the District Court for the Northern District of Ohio pursuant to MCL 15.268, Section E. We would need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved. Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Gross. Roll call.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
And Commissioners Ajax.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So we're looking for a motion to approve the, the agreement. So Commissioner Zajak, do you want to read the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the county's opioid litigation attorney's recommendation regarding the execution of a Michigan State subdivision agreement for allocation of distributor settlement agreement and the Jansen settlement agreement. And authorize the county administrator to sign any documents consistent with this motion after approval as deformed by the litigation attorney.
Is there support?
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Zajak, support by Commissioner Griffith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Motion passes. I believe the next item is adjournment. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved Helsman.
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Helsman and support by Commissioner Griffith. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? You are adjourned. Thank you.